Is there anyone here in the audience who would like to give an invocation? None heard, okay. City Clerk, would you please call the roll? Here.
Alderman Gettemeyer, Alderman Johnson, Alderman Nay, Alderman Waters, Alderman Wilson.
Okay. All right, moving right along. Does anybody have any questions on the consent agenda? Any of the aldermen? Nothing heard, so we will, can I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda? Moved by Alderman Johnson, second by Alderman Wilson, all in favor? That's agenda is approved. Okay. So, public comment section is next. So before we start the public comment section, I just want to say that for anybody who may choose to speak at the public comment section, this is not an interactive section. It's an opportunity for you to get up and present your thoughts and ideas to the city and the board and myself will have an opportunity to respond at the end of the meeting, so. City Clerk, do we have anybody who wishes to speak in the public comment section?
Yes, Melissa Voe.
Hello, my name is Melissa Voe. My address is 3 Expedition Court, Darden Prairie, Missouri, 63368. I sent an email today to the mayor and the Board of Aldermen, which included a letter that was signed by every property owner on Expedition Court. We unanimously oppose ordinance 2370, or 2173, and we are seeking assistance from the mayor and the Board of Aldermen to remove signs which we feel are unnecessary on our street and may restrict the ability of our guests and family members to park in front of our homes. I can't speak to any issues that may have occurred on Expedition Court in years past. However, I have been a resident here with children who attend Osman Elementary for the past two years. And so I have watched this intersection every day at the morning and the afternoon, and I have noticed no issues on Expedition Court with excessive traffic, any kind of issues related to that. On the rare occasion that a parent chooses to park in our cul-de-sac, they have been respectful, they have not blocked driveways, and there have been just honestly no problems. There is no incentive for parents who are picking up their students to park on Expedition Court because the system that they have is really stellar. They get those kids out quickly and on time. The pickup line that they have for car riders dismisses before they even start walkers. So the point that I'm making here is that if you were trying to speed this up and you were trying to get your child faster, you would be doing yourself a disservice by parking in my street because you could do it faster by just going through the pickup line, and everyone understands that. The only time I've seen people park in that circle is...
Yeah, sometimes Jeff might help you out there.
It's usually in cases of inclement weather when we have people park in that circle. So if they had a student who was supposed to be a walker and then they, you know, it's raining outside, so then they will park there.
You can go ahead, you can keep talking.
Okay, so, so basically, we find this bill to be unnecessary and we would appreciate the signs be removed. And that is that there is no stop sign at the corner of Merriweather Lewis Drive at Expedition Court? At the end of my time?
Couple more seconds because of the microphone lag, but please. Okay. All right, thank you for your time and thank you for coming up and speaking, Ms. Voe. City Clerk, do we have anybody else who would like to comment? Okay. Thank you. Okay, so moving forward here. So next up on the item, next up on the agenda is a public hearing. So due to the position or not sending the notices to adjacent property owners, the public hearing will be postponed until 17th. But in the meantime, we are going to open up the public hearing in the event that there is anybody here who would like to speak on that. So is there anyone here who wants to speak on the public hearing on Stillwater Grove?
Mr. Mayor, I would ask for a motion to open the public hearing and then see if there are anybody to speak.
Can I entertain a motion to open the public hearing? Moved by Alderman Johnson, second by Alderman Gettemeyer. All in favor? Any opposed? Hearing is now open. Is there anybody here who would like to speak on the Stillwater Grove CUP? None heard? Entertained a motion to postpone the hearing to the next regularly scheduled meeting? I believe that's the, that'll be the proper protocol here, city attorney?
Correct.
Okay. Entertained a motion to postpone this Stillwater Grove CUP public hearing till the next regularly scheduled meeting? Moved by Alderman Johnson, second by Alderman Wilson, all in favor? Let's go back to P&amp;Z if it's to reschedule.
So at the P&amp;Z meeting, the commission exercised the same, open the public hearing, postpone till their next meeting. So it'll be at the next P&amp;Z meeting, but it'll still be on the agenda at the next Board of Aldermen meeting. So, right, because there's, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think I did say postpone until September 17th is specifically in there, so I think we're covered, but excellent point, thank you. Alderman Nay? City Attorney, are we good?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks. All right, moving on to new business. We did? I thought we did. Okay, we did, that's right. All in favor? Alderman Nay? All right, that is now postponed till September 17th. The public hearings postponed to September 17th. Okay, moving forward to new business. Next up is Bill 2538. Can I entertain a motion to read Bill 2538 for the first time by title only? Moved by Alderman Gettemeyer, second by Alderman Johnson? All in favor? City Attorney, please read Bill 2538 by title only for the first time.
An ordinance of the City of Darden Prairie, Missouri approving a record plat for the development commonly known as Darden View Apartments located along Technology Drive in the city.
City Administrator, is this an administrative? This, we did discuss this and I, it's a bit rhetorical, but per your for your discussion, our discussion earlier, you did indicate this was administrative, is that correct?
Yes, record plats would be considered administrative actions.
Okay, so that being said, I'll open up the board. Is there any discussion or questions that the board has on Bill 2538? Unheard?
I think we should clarify because of the moratorium that this is something that had been prior approved and is not a new a new item.
Yep, excellent point. So this is not something that would fall under the the umbrella of the moratorium because of the final plan being previously approved prior to the moratorium being enacted. City Attorney, would you like to expound on that just a little bit for the, yeah, for clarification?
Right, so the moratorium only applies to new submissions that were new as of the date of the effective date of the moratorium. This project was ongoing prior to that effective date and therefore is still in consideration for the board.
Thank you for bringing that point up, Alderman Detwiler. And thank you, City Attorney. Okay, any further questions on Bill 2538? Any discussion, none heard? Can I entertain a motion for a second reading on Bill 2538 by title only? Moved by Alderman Wilson, second by Alderman Gettemeyer, all in favor? Opposed? Unheard? City Attorney, please read Bill 2538 second time title only.
An ordinance of the City of Darden Prairie, Missouri approving a record plat for the development commonly known as Darden View Apartments located along Technology Drive in the city.
Further discussion? Call vote moved by Alderman Johnson. Second by Alderman Wilson, all in favor? City Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Waters, Alderman Gettemeyer, Alderman Johnson, Alderman Nay, Alderman Detwiler, Alderman Wilson, ordinance 2374.
And I declare Bill 2538 passed and adopted as an ordinance number 2374. Okay, next up for new business is going to be Bill 2539. Can I entertain a motion to read Bill 2539 by title only for the first time? By Alderman Detwiler or Gettemeyer, second by Alderman Detwiler. All in favor? Any opposed? Unheard? City Attorney?
An ordinance of the City of Darden Prairie, Missouri authorizing the city administrator to execute an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the City of O'Fallon, Missouri for asphalt path repairs and sealing on Fizey Road.
Now. Okay. So that's kind of where I was getting at here. So I want to say that right now, I think it is not administrative, but I did want to ask the city engineer if there was any reason or the city administrator if there was any need based on our intercooperational agreement and the fact they're already underway with this project. We're piggybacking and gaining efficiencies through this partnership. Is there any risk to this by not doing two readings tonight, or is there any telling reason to break from the standard? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, if there's a rush for it or anything like that. I don't know, I don't know if the project has started yet, has commenced, so I wouldn't think there is a need for this because it's simply just, we give them the money and they will get the work done, but...
Do they need commitment in the next two weeks?
I don't believe they need a commitment in the next two weeks, though. I was, I always not felt pressured. I wasn't told pressure to get this done quickly.
City Administrator, any additional thoughts and puts on that from your perspective?
As long as the city engineer is comfortable that we can do a second reading at the September... Because it's actually three weeks, I think, because of how September falls. Anyway, it sounds like there's not any rush, so we should be okay. He did disclose it and discuss this at a previous work session, so we're good.
The board, the board clearly has the, you know, and the board has the, if the board feels compelled and comfortable enough to read a second time, we can do that as well, but it is standard practice, it is, you know, to do two readings and the board. Okay. All right, that being said, we will move forward to old business. Okay. Next up in old business, we have Bill 2536. This was read one time on August 6th. Can I entertain a motion to read Bill 2536 by title only for the second time? Moved by Alderman Detwiler, second by Alderman Gettemeyer, all in favor? Any opposed? City Attorney?
An ordinance of the City of Darden Prairie, Missouri authorizing the city administrator to accept the proposal from Shraft Construction Co. LLC for snow and ice removal services for the winter season of 2025 to 2026.
So for, just for general edification, this is a new venture for the City of Darden Prairie to adopt snow removal, private snow removal services due to the St. Charles County who we previously had an agreement with for the last several years, and they took care of our snow removal and ice removal services. That's changed, so we have had to go out and seek bidding for our own. And this is the, this is the company that had bid and won, and we are simply approving that. So these, this will be our, should it be a pass and approved here today, Shraft will take care of our snow and ice services moving forward in the future, so. Any further discussion by the board? I know we talked about it a little bit last, last meeting and other work sessions. Any further questions, clarifications? None heard?
City Administrator, can you just remind me, this is a year-by-year contract, is that correct? Or is it like, once we do this once, we'll do it in a three-year intervals, or can you remind me that real quick?
I believe we're entering into it for one year with two renewals, so you have the option to renew.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, good question, thanks.
I did talk to the contractor on this and a lot of the cul-de-sacs that we have, as he's reviewing the streets and stuff, he won't be taking the snow plows as he would be using a skid loader to go in and actually clean them better, so we shouldn't have the problems with blocking the driveways and all that with the snow. And he's got all, all kinds of equipment. And he'd like to go in with a skid loader instead of a plow, so he can get around the cul-de-sacs better to clean them up too. So I think we're going to see quite a bit of improvement on snow plowing.
Absolutely, and in addition to that, you know, as the city minister reported out last time, you know, we're going to have a direct line to this vendor and be much more responsive to citizen requests and issues that may arise as they will be working directly for the city in this case, so really exciting stuff, so.
I have one quick question for the city engineer. City engineer, when a snowplow comes through and it covers a fire hose, is there something that we have to make sure we do as the company or the city? With fire hydrant, I'm sorry, fire hydrant, yes.
Yeah, they shouldn't be blocking fire hydrants. They should remove, the contractor themselves should be removing the snow and not piling anything up in front of fire hydrants or pushing any stone towards fire hydrants.
Is that in our contract? I just have to ask that question.
I don't believe it's specifically in the contract, but we can address it at the preseason meeting, for sure.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Could just add, so in addition to the preseason meeting that city engineer Matt has mentioned, we also will be putting out education to our citizens prior to snow season on things like moving their cars so that they're not blocking the pathways for snow removal and setting expectations about cul-de-sacs. Cul-de-sacs are always done last. There was a lot of frustration last year on snow removal from our folks that live in cul-de-sacs because they'd see the snowplow drive straight by and miss their, miss their cul-de-sac. So we're going to have the preseason meeting with the contractor and then we will be educating our citizens on the snow removal process, so they have a good awareness and understanding of what that's going to look like. And then a clear message on how to report concerns and how we'll manage those concerns.
All right, good discussion. I think well, just one minute's time, good discussion so far. It's going to be exciting to have, you know, these guys coming in and it sounds like they're going to be doing a good job and having some, you know, hopefully reduced emails from frustrated residents about the county plowing our roads for us, so. That being said, can I maybe like entertain a motion for a vote on, let's see, be ready for a second. Most real call vote by Alderman Johnson, second by Alderman Wilson, all in favor? City Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Nay.
Hi.
Alderman Johnson.
Hi.
Alderman Detwiler. Alderman Wilson. Alderman Waters. Alderman Gettemeyer. Ordinance 2375.
I have declared Bill 2536 passed and adopted as ordinance number 2375. Okay. That concludes old business. Moving on to Officer and Staff Communications, first up is going to be City Attorney.
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, City Engineer, do you have anything additional?
I have nothing additional, Mr. Mayor.
City Administrator?
Thank you. In, in response to public comment regarding the signs installed on Expedition Court, I just wanted to share that there was a very thoughtful process on the wording on those signs in consideration for the residents. We wanted to be sure it would not disrupt them or their guests for the use of the parking areas near their properties. So it's specific to dropping off schoolchildren and picking them up, which should not interfere with the residents living there in any way. And also, in terms of enforcement, we discussed this a little bit at the last, when this ordinance was adopted, but our police officers are not going to go out there and start ticketing individuals. Their approach is going to be to share with the individual there what the, what the parking restrictions are and, and have them move on. So we're not out there, you know, strictly enforcing by issuing tickets. And then finally, I wanted to say that the safety concerns related to Expedition Court and children in that area crossing over to the other side of the street has also been discussed in quite a bit of detail in, in the past here in my tenure here since October. And if the board will recall, we did submit a grant application for funding for safety improvements for all of our schools. And we did not get that funding, but we're going to be reapplying and working towards getting grant support for making safety improvements for all of our schools. And that's all I have this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Next up is the alderman. Any, go ahead.
Yeah, this is Alderman Detwiler. I also wanted to talk about the signs in Expedition Court. When I had my meeting, was requested to attend a meeting with Fort Zumwalt School District, the principal at Osman, the transportation director for Fort Zumwalt, the resource officer, myself, and at the time, our other engineer. It was discussed about the cars that do go in and out of there at either drop off or pickup on various days. And it was observed that they are at times very, they go in there very quickly and are not always cautious about going in and out of that cul-de-sac. The problem with putting a crosswalk there is it's not just a matter of putting lines on the street because a crosswalk today has to have handicap ramps. And that wouldn't require a handicap ramp being put on every corner. And there is not a sidewalk on Expedition Court, so the crosswalk would go to someone's yard or to the street, and you can't have children crossing, taking responsibility for children crossing over and then putting them out onto the street. So it's not as simple as it sounds as to putting in a crosswalk. There are rules and, and regulations to doing it. And I, being a trustee in Lewis and Clark, I will take responsibility to talk to each individual in that court and explain to them that their, their guests, their deliveries, their other things that are going to be coming there are not going to be affected. These signs specifically say pick up and drop off for school. So no one needs to be concerned about that, and the, the concern is that the kids were getting dropped off or crossing the street to be picked up. And, you know, that's, that's just not a dangerous or a safe thing to do. My concern with putting a stop sign coming in on Merriweather Lewis is it's not very far from the corner. And you're going to have these cars and buses that are coming in and then have to stop and then either go straight or turn or whatever they're going to have to do. And at certain times of the day, it's already traffic at that corner up there and traffic going in and out. And I'm just not sure that putting a crosswalk, and if you put a crosswalk and then a stop sign, then unless you have someone monitor that stop sign, that you're going to have some people that are just going to go right on through, just like they do other stop signs, and you have a child right in the middle of the street. So I, I feel like a crosswalk at that intersection is a little bit of more of a, could be a hazard than to not have it and have a parent walk their child across the street or go down to the corner where we do have a crosswalk and cross there and go up the sidewalk on the other side of the street. I mean, that's the option that the other people use who live in the cul-de-sac down the street or on the other side of the school, so. I'm not against a crosswalk, I just think it's a crosswalk to nowhere because there is not a sidewalk there in that cul-de-sac for that crosswalk to go to.
Thank you, Alderman Detwiler.
Something very short. I saw a resident of ours cleaning up the the grass on the street going towards 6364. And I, if I wasn't like going to work, I really would have stopped and I really would have, I should have thought about it myself, like calling somebody to see if we can pick that up. So I want to first thank that resident, but then also making sure that we do something in the future. I know I was talking to some city officials, like maybe do we need to have meetings with our officials, state representatives, our senators, to tell them like, hey, these are the things that we need to see change in our city. So I just want to, I don't know, listen to the board, see what you guys think, but we probably need to do something a lot more. We have Ernie speaking for us, but we want to make sure we speak for ourselves as well, too. So I just want to make sure I say that.
Alderman Wilson, I agree with you. We're one of the few cities that don't invite our representatives, state representative and senators and that to come and discuss with us what we would like seen done with our road improvements and stuff like that. And I think they can help push some things, and I'd like to maybe, I agree with you there, maybe, Mr. Mayor, you can set up some type of meeting for us to do that. A lot of the cities do meet with them on a regular basis. And, and I think we may get some progress on some stuff. If nothing else, it's good to hear their point of view on issues, even if they don't care.
Yeah. Yeah.
I, well, you know, I mean, the truth comes out, you know.
Yeah, the city administrator and I have had some discussions recently about putting together a plan to engage MoDOT about that issue, but more importantly, one of the issues that I want to bring is something that I know that you had addressed previously. MoDOT, uh, about that issue, but more importantly, one of the issues that I want to bring is something that I know that you had addressed previously as well as access to Garden Prairie from sixty-four to three sixty-four. So, uh, we're we're kind of tossing around a couple ideas, uh, right now. Um, and I have a few meetings set up with some stakeholders, uh, in the coming weeks, uh, to to just to try to figure out the best pathway forward with that. But I do believe that, you know, just engaging with the state representatives directly as well can be fruitful, too. And I do know that we've had state representatives come in here. Typically, uh, in my experiences that we've had, at the end of the session, the state representatives would come in and and provide a report from Jeff City. Uh, I know we didn't have one this year, but, uh, in years past, I think every year we've always had that, so. Uh, might be worth reaching out, uh, to the state representatives and see if they have anything they'd like to come in and bring to the, uh, the city to kind of give us an update what's going on Jeff City and also give us an opportunity to have a discussion with them when they show up here to talk about uh, some of the things that we we'd like to see, but, um, but yeah, no, excellent points. Thanks for bringing it up. All right, nothing heard. I guess that's going to leave it to me. I don't know, you know, we've, I think everybody's touched on it. Um, you know, the the signs, um, the signs put up in in your court, uh, in this court. And why can't I think of the name of the court again? Expedition, sorry, I'm in World Three. Uh, the signs up in Expedition, uh, as Alderman Detwiler had explained and 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 uh, there was a lot of thought and process put into it. Uh, we explored, uh, road striping, uh, we explored a number of different things. Uh, I'm not going to go and continue to expound upon all the things that have already been discussed, but uh, from my position as the mayor, the the safety improvement grant is really important because we have several elementary schools around our our town and we have deficiencies with sidewalks, sidewalk striping, crosswalks. And in the last year alone, we've had a couple of young children that have, uh, unfortunately perished due to, you know, accidents, uh, in and around, be it school buses to crossing roads and those things, uh, are something that is a priority for me. Uh, we're exploring the opportunities to to get grants. We we tried and failed once, but uh, that's something that I'm putting as a priority is to try to figure out the the way to improve safety around our schools in the city of Darden Prairie. Uh, so we'll continue to look into that and what we can do to, um, to help with the safety around every school, including, uh, the one on Meriwether Lewis, so. Um, and and again, it's not as, as Alderman Detwiler pointed out, it's not always as easy as it may seem. Um, I wish it were, but, uh, we're we're working to do the best we can to serve residents. And again, nobody's trying to stop the residents that live there for parking there or their guests. Um, and if there are any additional questions, I welcome, uh, further discussion after the meeting. Uh, that being said, I want to take an opportunity to, uh, thank St. Charles County Police Department for for showing up and, uh, you know, providing a little bit of, uh, safety back there. Uh, thanks, everybody else for coming in and and listening in, uh, participating, uh, for those that did participate. And and thank our, uh, our esteemed representative from Mid Rivers for joining us as well, so. Uh, thanks, guys. Hope you have a good evening. And, uh, with that, I'd like to entertain a motion to close the, uh, Board of Alder meeting.
Come on.
Second by Alderman Detwiler, uh, Gettemeyer, second by Alderman Wilson, all in favor? I call city attorney.